I think we're ready to go. So, good evening. This time I'd like to call and order the planning commission meeting for December 9th, 2024. For viewers watching at home, some members of the public may be participating via video conference or telephone conference. Item two, please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Commissioner Ferris?
Here.
Commissioner Tyler Kettlehut?
Here.
Commissioner McMahon?
Here.
Vice Chair Link?
Present.
Chair Lanson?
Here. Coming to you from a boardroom, so it's a little bit different environment, but the same process we usually go through. Item four, AB 2449 announcements, written comments and announcements and supplemental packages. Tonight, we have with us Deputy Community Development Director Fabiola Meliker. Are there any written comments, announcements, or continuances?
We have a supplemental packet that has been distributed to the commission and posted containing information on written correspondence from both staff and the public related to item 7A.
Great. Item five, are there any public comments?
No.
We will skip that then and go to item six, the consent calendar. Next, we have the consent calendar with the minutes for the meeting of November 18th. Do any of my fellow commissioners have any comments or a motion to approve the consent calendar? Or other comments to make? Commissioner McMahon?
I move that we approve the minutes of the meeting for November 18th, 2024.
Seeing no other comments, could you please prepare us for a vote?
Commissioner Ferris?
Abstain.
Commissioner Tyler Kettlehut?
Abstain.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Vice Chair Link?
Yes.
Chair Lanson?
Yes.
Motion carries three zero, Commissioners Ferris and Tyler Kettlehut abstaining.
Which for the public was because they were not here for that last meeting. Item seven. Will the Secretary please open the public hearing for item 7A?
Hearing having been advertised as required by laws hereby open to consider agenda item 7A to allow installation of an unmanned wireless communication facility, including equipment to be mounted, six antennas and associated cables on a new 72-foot high light fixture to replace an existing 71-foot 3-inch high light fixture, associated ground-mounted equipment, emergency generator, and removal of one parking space to accommodate a new 410-square-foot trash and equipment enclosure located adjacent to the baseball field and North Ranch Play Field within the public quasi-public and institutional lands and facilities PL zone and find that the project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act SEQA guidelines pursuant to Class 2 Section 15302 replacement and reconstruction and Class 3 Section 15303 new construction or conversion of small structures located at 952 Rockfield Street, Assessors Parcel Number APN 668-0-020-825. The applicant is John McDonald, Yukon Group on behalf of Dish Wireless.
Thank you. My understanding is we have Planning Manager Rice will introduce the Community Development Technician Nicole Katz to make the presentation.
Good evening Chair and Commission. I just wanted to make sure that everybody had the opportunity to meet Ms. Nicole Katz. She's one of our newest planners. She's a community development technician. She's been with us full-time so far for about seven months now. Having previously, she worked for the City Sustainability Division and she was also our planning intern during COVID. We're really lucky to have her. She's jumped in with both feet and she's hit the ground running and learning as much as she can. She's recently expressed an interest in learning about wireless projects, so we wanted to afford her the opportunity to work on this project and gain some valuable experience. So, we look forward to hearing her present her first item tonight. Also here this evening is Angela Georgiev, who is our Associate Planner and the City's Wireless Consultant, Dr. Jonathan Kramer, who will be further introduced during this presentation. And with that, I'll hand it over to Ms. Katz.
Thank you very much for the introduction. Good evening Chair and Commissioners. Before you tonight is a request to allow for the installation of an unmanned wireless communication facility, including equipment to be mounted, six antennas and associated cables, on a new 72-foot high light fixture to replace an existing 71-foot 3-inch high light fixture, associated ground-mounted equipment, an emergency generator, and removal of one parking space to accommodate a new 410-square-foot trash and equipment enclosure. Per Thousand Oaks Municipal Code, Planning Commission review is required for new wireless facilities located within certain non-residential zones with the approval of a special use permit. In this case, the facility is located on a property with a zoning of public, quasi-public, and institutional lands and facilities. The subject property is located at the North Ranch Play Field, which is currently owned and operated by the Canejo Recreation and Parks District. In addition to the playfields, the area contains residential homes, multifamily homes, and commercial shopping centers. Here is an aerial view of the property outlined in red. The North Ranch Play Fields includes playfields, a baseball diamonds with stadium seating, tennis courts, a basketball court, a restroom building, and a parking lot. The surrounding land uses include single-family residences to the north and west, attached and detached single-family residences to the south, and multifamily apartments to the east. The closest residence to the proposed facility is approximately 210 feet away. Here is a close-up view of the site plan. The antennas are to be located on the replacement light fixture on the east side of the park, north of the baseball diamond, and south of the parking lot. The generator is proposed to be located within the new equipment enclosure in the southwest corner of the parking lot. All new equipment to be mounted on the replacement light fixture at the property includes three 6-foot panel antennas, six radios at antennas, one surge suppressor at antennas, one hybrid cable, one equipment cabinet, one H-frame with PPC and telco cabinet, and one GPS antenna. All new equipment to be ground-mounted within the new equipment enclosure at the property includes one standby generator with a UL 2085 fuel tank and 32-gallon diesel capacity, one telco fiber enclosure, one dish wireless Sienna box, one dish wireless equipment cabinet, and one dish wireless access metal gate. Here is a close-up elevation of the existing and proposed light fixture. The dashed lines depict the existing light fixture. With the installation of the replacement light fixture, the tallest point of the light fixture will be 72 feet. The antennas mounted on the replacement light fixture and concealed in a radome will be located at a height of 67 feet and 6 inches. To better illustrate this, the applicant has provided photo simulations. The photo on the left is the existing light fixture, and the photo on the right shows the simulation of the replacement light fixture, which is located approximately 10 feet east of the existing pole. The proposed facility is designed in a location to have limited visibility from any adjacent point and to blend with the immediate surroundings. The associated equipment and standby generator will be installed above ground within a new 410-square-foot trash and equipment enclosure. The enclosure is being provided by the applicant as a dual-purpose structure through an agreement with the Canejo Recreation and Parks District. The North Ranch Play Fields does not currently have a trash enclosure to contain their trash facilities. Through the installation of the trash and equipment enclosure, all ground-mounted wireless equipment will be screened from public view in an aesthetically pleasing manner while providing a benefit to parkgoers at no additional cost to the Canejo Recreation and Park District. To accommodate the enclosure, one parking space will be removed. The new enclosure walls will have a stucco finish designed to match the color and texture of the park's existing restroom building. Additionally, the enclosure's roof will match that of the existing restroom building in the park. The proposed equipment will have scheduled maintenance visits and emit no loud noises or sound. An alternative sites analysis is required by the applicant to explain the selection process for the proposed wireless communications facility, including information about other sites considered and the reason for each site's rejection. Five sites were evaluated, which included a water tower, a Southern California Edison substation, a transmission tower, and two churches. The sites were determined to be unfeasible due to constraints associated with attaching wireless facilities onto existing infrastructure and an uninterested property representative. It is for these reasons that the five alternative sites were rejected. As part of the alternative sites analysis, the applicant is also required to submit propagation maps. Propagation maps are used to show in a visual format the coverage for a wireless communication facility and can show the gap and coverage in the applicant's current communication systems. Specifically shown in this map, the applicant is looking to fill the gap to the north, south, and east of the site, where there are many residential homes. This is depicted in the dark and lighter green areas. This is the applicant's propagation map that shows the future coverage with installation of the proposed site. As shown here, the proposed wireless facility will increase coverage to fill in the current service gap in the area, which is shown in the addition of the orange areas and light green areas, north, south, and east of the proposed site. To provide a uniform and comprehensive set of standards for the development of wireless communications facilities, the City Council adopted Resolution 97-197, which regulates the approval, location, and design of wireless communications antennas and facilities. This resolution affects all wireless facilities within the city's jurisdiction. Per Section 4B2A3, the utilization of a playfield light standard is specifically identified as an acceptable location for a new wireless facility, provided that the antenna height does not project more than five feet above the structure to which it is attached. The proposed wireless facility is to be located on a replacement light fixture and at a height which does not project beyond the fixture, thereby demonstrating compatibility with development standards pertaining to the siting of wireless facilities while not creating a detrimental visual impact. The following slides will describe the evaluation conducted, including compliance with the city's general plan and zoning, project design and project visibility, appropriateness of land use, and the technical review. The proposed project meets several goals and policies of the general plan within the community facilities element in terms of telecommunications infrastructure and telecommunications facility siting. The project site is ZONE PL, which is consistent with the existing parks, golf courses, and open space designation in the general plan's land use element. The proposed wireless facility is in allowed use within the PL zone with the approval of a special use permit. A second criteria used to evaluate the proposed project is its design and visibility. The proposed facility has been designed to meet the required standards from the city's adopted resolution and that the proposed facility has been integrated into the design of an pertinent feature or structure. The facility will be concealed within a radome attached to the replacement light fixture, which will be finished in a neutral color and non-reflective surface to blend with the existing light fixtures and immediate surroundings. An emergency diesel generator is being proposed to provide power to the facility in the event of a power outage. It will be contained within an above-ground equipment enclosure, which will be architecturally compatible with the existing restroom building in the park. The generator is approximately 72 feet away from the nearest residence and is located in the southwest portion of the parking lot adjacent to Rockfield Street. Conditions of approval require for the generator to have scheduled tests running approximately once a month to ensure proper operation in the event of an emergency. A third evaluation criteria is the appropriateness of the land use. The proposed facility may be approved with a special use permit provided that the use is compatible with the uses of the site and adjoining uses. The site is developed with a park, playfields, and lighting and is surrounded by single-family and multifamily residential uses. To be visually compatible, the facility is stealth-designed and contained within a radome. The associated equipment and generator will be constructed in a new above-ground enclosure with materials to match the park's restroom building, and no component of the equipment and facility will be exposed to public view. The utilization of a playfield light standard is specifically identified as an acceptable location for a wireless facility. Facilities are often proposed in parks because the stadium or playfield lights are tall enough to achieve the goals of providing acceptable levels of coverage. The proposed location was chosen because it has existing light fixtures that can achieve coverage objectives, will minimize visual impacts, is compatible with existing uses on the project site, and will assist in filling a service gap to the intended area of coverage. Therefore, the proposed facility will not have an unreasonable detrimental visual impact. The project was reviewed in compliance with FCC guidelines by our city's wireless consultant, Dr. Jonathan Kramer. At this time, I would like to introduce Dr. Kramer and have him discuss his technical review of the project.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Staff and Commissioners, and most importantly to the public. I'm Jonathan Kramer. I'm the lead at Telecom Law Firm. And as you just heard, we did review this project as we have reviewed essentially every other project since 1987 that's come into the city. The project does comply with the FCC rules. It is completely consistent with the goals of the coverage that the applicant has proposed. Consistent with that, because it does comply with the FCC rules, that is the limit of our exploration into this subject. So, I would encourage you to accept the fact that the applicant has met that particular burden. I only talked about the RF safety issues here. I'll have other comments if you wish about the design. But in terms of the overall project itself, this is consistent with what Dish is doing elsewhere in other communities, because we work for so many other cities, and this is actually more than they're doing in most communities, because in most communities, they're not proposing to integrate their equipment and generator in this case as they have here. So, this is a bit more unusual for what they're proposing for Thousand Oaks. for what they're proposing for Thousand Oaks. If you have specific questions about RF safety or design, I'd be happy to answer them, but that's just a brief overview of our detailed work. Our report is part of the public record, although it's not included in the package tonight. Our usual report is in the possession of the city staff. With that, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kramer. The project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act SEQA pursuant to Section 15302, which allows for replacement structures, and Section 15303, which allows for new construction of small structures. Additionally, no exception in Section 15302 of the SEQA guidelines applies to this project, including subsections A through C. Staff received three emails of correspondence from members of the public. One email was from a member of the public who had no objection to the wireless facility itself, but wanted to request additional lighting at the park to better illuminate the walkways. Staff provided the individual with contact information for a representative at the Canejo Recreation and Parks District to address their concerns. Additionally, one member of the public had questions about the project, and another resident expressed concerns pertaining to the aesthetics and public health. Staff met with both members of the public to answer their questions and review the plans. All public correspondents received responses from staff in a timely manner. Finally, staff recommends that the planning commission find that the project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act SEQA pursuant to Class II Section 15302, replacement and reconstruction, and Class III Section 15303, new construction or conversion of small structures of the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines, and to approve wireless communications facility WCF 2024-7006 to allow the installation of an unmanned wireless communication facility to be located adjacent to the baseball field and the North Ranch Playfields, based on the findings and subject to the conditions included in the attached resolution. I would like to acknowledge that a supplemental packet was distributed this afternoon. The supplemental packet included one revision to the staff report, one revision to the draft resolution, and an email of correspondence. That concludes my presentation, and we are available for questions. Thank you.
I'm going to say, Ms. Katz, thank you. That was fantastic. This is your first time ever doing this?
Yes, sir.
Hard to believe. That was fantastic. Thank you very much. Questions from the commission? Commissioner Kettlehut?
So, it indicates that the generator will have monthly tests. What? And it's seven, did I read it right? There was 72 feet from the nearest residence? How close is the generator to the nearest residence?
Thanks. The project is approximately 210 feet from the nearest residence. The generator, I'm talking about the antenna, the applicant could better talk about the distance from the...
About 70 feet.
70 feet, okay.
And it says that it'll be tested monthly. What kind of a noise? You know, what kind of noise does that generate?
The generator by our municipal code has to comply with our noise ordinance standards, so whatever it is it would be within the noise ordinance. The purpose of the testing, by the way, is to make sure that the generator's battery stays topped up and that generosity is lubricated. So, it's only run for about 15 minutes per cycle, per test cycle.
So, do you think it would be something akin to like a leaf blower? What kind of a noise does it make?
Substantially less than a leaf blower, because this is actually going to be enclosed so that the noise shunts upwards as opposed to outwards.
Other questions? Commissioner Mike?
And the generator is, I guess either federal or state law is required to have a battery backup for wireless facilities in the state of California?
California has a requirement for standby power at most sites. This is a key site for Dish, so because it covers such a large area, that's why they have a generator proposed here.
I've seen no questions. I just have one. It's the standard one, Dr. Kramer, which essentially is, and you've been here a number of times, and we've talked at length with regard to FCC regulations. Since the last time we got together, has anything changed with regard to the FCC regulations and the purview under which we can evaluate these projects?
No, the rules that we operate under were really imposed upon local governments by Congress in the 1996 Telecom Act. And national standards were adopted in 1997, 1997-1998 timeframe by the FCC. Those standards still are in play today. Those are the standards which every jurisdiction judges a wireless facility, and this one did comply.
Okay. That's my only question. Any other questions from commissioners? I see no. I know I had the applicant card, which was really just to answer questions. So, I would say, commissioners, is there any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, we usually go back to their, at that point, if there's a public comment, I don't have cards. I'm getting a nod. I didn't know if anybody wanted to speak.
We have no speakers.
We have no public comment. Okay, so at that point, I would go back to the staff to provide any further information you'd like. Yeah, exactly. If there's anything further you wanted to add, other than beyond the report that you provided?
Nothing beyond the presentation at this time. Thank you, Chair.
All right, so at that point, let's close the public hearing, and I will open up the floor to commissioners for comments or a motion. Commissioner Link?
This seems procedural at this point, but I would move that we adopt a resolution based on the findings and subject to the conditions contained therein that the project is categorically exempt from SEQA, California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Class II Section 15302, replacement and reconstruction, and Class III Section 15303, new construction or conversion of small structures, and approve wireless communication facility WCF 2024-70006. And that's it.
Vice Chair Link? That would be subject to the modification in the conditions that were in the supplemental today?
Subject to the modifications in the resolution that was in the supplemental distributed to commission.
Perfect. Any other commissioner comments? No? Go ahead and prepare us for a vote.
Commissioner Ferris?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyler Kettlehut?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Vice Chair Link?
Yes.
Chair Lanson?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
As this is an issue that can be appealed, I have to read the following. Any aggrieved party who wishes to appeal the planning commission's decision may do so by filing an appeal with the Community Development Department within 10 days. That's it for that item. We go to item eight, which is department reports. It says there's none. We'll go to item nine, which is commission comments and AB 1234 reports. Do I have any commissioners that want to make comments or AB 1234 reports? Commissioner?
Thank you, Chair Lanson. Much as was noted in the previous meeting and in the minutes by Commissioner McMahon and Chair Lanson, I too attended the Ventura County Housing Conference and included talks on farmworker housing, on the accommodation to be able to build those within the county SOAR regulations. And in fact, there was a slight overview of the Thousand Oaks Campus Master Plan during that time, so I just wanted to call that out as my attendance there. And I did not interact at all with the other two commissioners during that period.
Much to our sheer grin. No, anyway, any other comments or? I would just say the general, we're in for a very difficult time for the next 24 hours, so please, please take extra precaution with regard to areas around your property for very high winds. Let's try not to have anything happen that's going to like happen last month, so let's be very careful about that. Oh, Commissioner Link?
As this is our last meeting before the holidays, wanted to wish everybody in Thousand Oaks a Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, which seems very late this year, actually, and a Happy New Year.
Next, we go to staff update. Ms. Meliker, are there any follow-up items, announcements, or upcoming issues?
Thank you, Chair. Tomorrow evening, there will be a consent calendar item for the second reading of the Municipal Code Amendment implementing the housing element programs for voluntary lot mergers and SB 35 streamlined process and incentives for affordable housing with lot consolidation that you heard on September 23rd and City Council heard on the 3rd. And also following that is, as Commissioner Link noted, this will be our last meeting for the year. And there will be a public hearing on January 13 by the Planning Commission, and this will be for updates to the accessory dwelling unit ordinance to comply once more with the changes made by the state of California. And this is how we're going to open our new year. So, Happy Holidays to everyone.
I feel like we're doing Groundhog Day by having that come up every single year for the last seven years. With that, I will adjourn to the next meeting, which is January 13th, 2025. With that, good night, Thousand Oaks.